Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order if you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Danny, would you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused.
Councilmember Wales.
Thank you. All right, we will get right into it this evening under Presentations. We have a presentation on the response to the Heritage Building Fire and we have quite an illustrious team that is going to be presenting for us this evening, so I will turn it over to you and let you introduce yourselves and on with it.
All right. Hi, good evening. Jason Crum with the City of Auburn Community Development and Public Works Department. I am the building official for the City of Auburn and I, along with representatives from Valley Regional Fire Authority and the City of Auburn Departments of Economic Development and Community Services, will be providing a brief presentation regarding the Heritage Building Fire and some of the initial incident and response, current status, as well as potential future steps. So, little background information, it's a two-story structure constructed in 1921. It consists of approximately 24,000 square feet, 12,000 per story. Also consisted of nine separate businesses and tenant spaces throughout the building, as well as 36 residential units. So our presentation this evening, first Kevin Olson and Karen Stewart will be talking about the fire response and investigation, and then I will talk a bit about site and building security and stability, and then Joyce Scott will be discussing the communication and coordination efforts from both Community Services as well as Emergency Management, and then Doug Lean will be talking about the impact of businesses and the efforts that Economic Development have been working with those owners on. So I will turn it over to Valley Regional Fire Authority.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I see. Kevin Olson, Deputy Chief, Valley Regional Fire Authority, Mayor Baggett's council members, thanks for letting us come over tonight and talk about the response to this fire. What we're going to talk about tonight is just the initial response, kind of what went on there, and then we'll review the investigation component. Also, talk a little bit about the fire behavior and how the fire reacted to the building. So, this was a three-alarm fire. We had a total of 33 units and 82 firefighters that responded from around South King County. The call was received at 2:54:48, and you can see we had two units arrive on location. 831 arrived at 2:58:13, and Engine 31 arrived at 2:58:31. So about three-and-a-half-minute response, probably about a little over two minutes drive time, so you can see when we have a report of a commercial fire, the turnout times are pretty fast. That's a pretty fast response, you know, they're putting on all their gear before they get on the rig. So, the battalion chief, the incident commander arrived at 2:59:31, that was Battalion Chief Gary Barker. You see that he immediately upon arriving at 2:59:37, he upgraded to a working fire and a second alarm, which is very good to see. It's very important that we get additional units responding to assist with these types of incidents, and Gary did a really good job of banging out that working fire and that second alarm upgrade. I'll talk a little bit about what went on on the slide here in a few minutes, but we did have an occupant that was non-ambulatory that needed to be rescued from Unit 14. Engine 31 accomplished that, and then at 3:23:52, there was a withdrawal order, meaning all firefighters were ordered to withdraw from the building, and we changed strategies and went from offensive to defensive, and I'll talk a little bit about that, too. So, we do know that the fire started in the laundry room, and I will say that in looking at this picture, I went over the, I reviewed the audio tape and I looked at several pictures. This was produced by Como Four here. I looked at several pictures that they had. This picture I can see, on the wider shot of it, I can see some of the units on location, and I know when those units arrived. And listening to the audio tape, this is probably about 3:25 PM here. So this is about 27 minutes after we arrived on location. So you can see that this is very, very significant involvement in the attic, so this is very dangerous to firefighters, and that's why we don't fight these from the inside. So, the size, extent, and location of the fire, when the fire call came in, you know, they did see a fire in the laundry room, but that wasn't actually where the fire was. The fire was actually burning in the overhead, probably almost immediately. So, there is an attic space, was an attic space in this building, that was about one to two feet in depth, so the roof rafters were framed with two-by-eight dimensional lumber, and the ceiling was framed with two-by-six dimensional joists. So again, you had a space about this big above the ceiling where the fire got into, and it ran the entire length of the building. So initially, the first arriving unit, Engine 31, positioned on the south side, and they extended a line immediately to Floor Two. They put in a request to, for some additional lines so that they could extend into the laundry room, and then they received a report that there was an occupant in 14. So while the line was being extended, they went over and grabbed the occupant in 14, took him down, and handed him to another unit at the bottom of the stairs, and went back in and started applying water and pulling ceiling to the fire. The battalion chief, when he arrived, he reported heavy smoke from the roof. Again, that's, you know, five minutes after dispatch, and so, you know, it really signifies the significant involvement in the attic. And one thing to note here, too, is you can see with these ventilation openings that they have in the attic, that they're providing a lot of, you know, adequate ventilation for the fire to burn freely in there, and that's why it burns so well there. So, after about 20 minutes of interior firefighting, pulling ceiling, we had three or four or five units up in the second floor, and all of them were reporting that the fire was running the attic and the ceiling was starting to collapse. So the incident commander made the decision to withdraw everybody and go defensive, and basically what that means is we're not putting anybody inside the building, we're going to fight the fire from the exterior. Yeah, basically, at this point, you know, we put ladders on the corners, we go with aerial master streams, we pump a lot of water. The city told us that we pumped about 1.5 million gallons, so we were there for about six hours, you know, fully flowing several aerial master streams. And then we worked with the building manager, I do have to say, she did a fantastic job of coming right up to the command post right after I got there. She gave me a list of all of the occupants, I was able, I told her to stay close, I made contact with her later, and she did a fantastic job of contacting every single person on that resident list and confirming either talking to them in person or calling them on the telephone and confirming that everybody was out of the building because we weren't able to completely search it. And with that, are there any questions on the response?
So Kevin, did you mention how many different agencies responded? I know there were like 31 pieces of apparatus, something like that.
Yeah, so there was 33 units, and if you'd like, Mayor, I can read off the people that responded, the agencies.
The agencies, if you could, I think that's important for everybody to hear, how many agencies were there.
Yeah, so South King Fire and Rescue, King County Medic One, Puget Sound Fire Authority, which is Kent, Tuck Willa Fire, Renton Fire, East Pierce Fire and Rescue, King County Fire District 20, Zone Three Fire Rehab, those are the explorers that come out and assist us with hydration and those types of things, Zone Three Fire Explorers, Auburn Police Department, City of Auburn Streets Department, City of Auburn Water Department, City of Auburn Maintenance and Operations, Puget Sound Energy and Red Cross, Soup Ladies, McDonald's, yeah, so, yep, that's the type of response you get in South King County with our automatic and mutual aid agreements, and, yep.
Councilmember Wales.
Did anyone from our emergency management team show up?
I didn't see anybody on site, but I know Jerry was in contact with several city departments that day. I actually went to a meeting and overviewed our response, and Jerry spoke about his involvement, yep.
Any other, okay, Councilmember Wales. Your microphone, please.
In the...
Your microphone isn't on.
In the 36 units...
Can you, Councilmember Wales, can you turn your microphone on so that it can be heard on the recording? That's the reason for the microphones. There it is.
Can you tell me how many people resided in the 36 units? Was it 36 individuals, or just, or there's some extra people in some of those?
I'm not exactly sure, but if I recall correctly, I think there were 33 residents.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do you remember, Mayor?
I think there were 39.
39, yeah, I know it was 30-something, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'll turn it over to Fire Marshal Karen Stewart to talk about the investigation.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Stewart, I am the Fire Marshal for Valley Regional Fire Authority, and my job as the Fire Marshal is to... Jason, are you going to do this one, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's already up there.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm right down here across the bottom, wrong slide. The Fire Marshal's office, we work with the construction of the buildings when they're being put up, we work with the maintenance of the buildings as well as the processes inside the buildings, and then, in the event of a fire, we do the fire investigation. And I read a quote today talking about another fire that had very different results than this, but what the quote was is, "The different combinations of construction aspects always set the stage for the fire response," and that is very true in this fire. We have a building that was built in 1921, we have a building that had a common attic space, no fire stopping up there. We also had a building that had no fire sprinkler system, it was built prior to the requirements for that. We did have a building with a fire alarm system. So our fire investigators arrive at a fire scene fairly early, they got to this scene early, and their job at that point in time is to talk to the witnesses, the residents, the occupants, anyone who saw something that might help us in the investigation. All of this is fact gathering, so we're gathering the facts. We did not get into the building to start investigating the area of origin or the cause until the next day. We do get the security fences put up so that they are in place, we can keep people out, because we need to determine whether this is a crime scene or an accidental fire, and that's part of why we put the security fences up. With this, the witnesses stated that the fire started in the laundry room, that it was small. As Chief Olson stated, by that point in time, the fire was already up in that attic, it was already burning up in that void space. If this building had had sprinkler systems, that void space wouldn't have existed, because you can't have those voids in a sprinkled building, there would have been sprinklers up there that would have put that fire out. The fire probably would have been put out in the room of origin. That's what sprinkler systems are to do, is they're to hold a fire in place until the fire department can get there. They are meant for life safety, that means getting people out, and property protection. Both in this case would have been beneficial. We also know that talking to the witnesses, that the fire alarm system in the building did work, they stated that they heard the alarm go off. So that is a positive. Once the investigator gets all the witness information, then they can go inside the building. We didn't get in the building until the next day because of the hotspots and the security and safety of the building. Once we get inside the building, we're going to look at the building and make sure that the facts fit what people say, or that doesn't fit what people say. So we're looking for the fire science and the fire behavior to determine where that fire started and what caused it. We do have the origin of the fire to the laundry room, we know that much. The cause of the fire is something that's still under investigation. We are now working with the private insurance companies, investigators, to determine the cause of the fire. The fire cause is determined by the ignition source, what started the spark that started that fire, and what was the first fuel ignited. Until we have the answers to those questions, we won't have the cause of the fire. So I can tell you, it originated in the laundry room, but I can't tell you the cause. Friday, we met with the private investigators out on the scene. The plan is to remove all the equipment out of the laundry room area, it's going to be removed and taken to labs off-site, and at that point, experts will go through, our investigators have been invited to join them, and they will go through and determine what the ignition source was and what the first fuel ignited was. At that point, then there's probably going to be more insurance companies involved. So, the example I want to use is, let's remove it out of a laundry room and put it into a kitchen. If we had a kitchen fire, and we had a toaster, a coffee pot, and a stove in there, and we couldn't tell which one of those three caused the fire, as long as it's not criminal, we're going to turn it over to the fire investigators from the insurance company, because they have the money to be able to go through and do all the testing on this. So they come up with the, it's the coffee pot. Well then, after they determine it's the coffee pot, then everyone who has components inside that coffee pot then gets the chance to dispute that fact. So, it will be quite some time before we have the cause to this fire. Does anyone have any questions for me? And I know we'd all like to know the timeframe.
Any?
All right, thank you.
Okay, so from a site security standpoint, perimeter fencing went around the building the day after the incident on the 27th, went from the north side of the Rainbow Cafe all the way around the building to the south end, and that also included both drive lanes of Main Street and majority of the pedestrian plaza on the east side. There was an immediate concern about the north facade of the building, and there was a parapet that stuck up above the second floor that was kind of hanging out into the public way. So the insurance companies hired an engineer to assess that, they made a recommendation to remove that parapet and that potential threat, so that was done on the 28th, I believe, and City of Auburn Community Development and Public Works engaged, are on-call structural engineer consultant to do an assessment of the perimeter with regards to the public way, and that was done on January 2nd, and based on their assessment, we were able to move that fence line south to open the westbound lane of Main Street, and then following that, the insurance company's engineer provided a more detailed report on January 3rd, which our consultant reviewed on January 4th. Based on that information, we were able to open all of Main Street, both lanes. So here, this picture kind of depicts, might be hard to see, but there's the yellow line there, that shows how that fencing moved over time, and that's how it remains presently. So from a building standpoint, Valley Regional Fire Authority asked Building Services to go out to the site the day after, they were still kind of battling some of the flare-ups, but we went out and did a kind of perimeter assessment of the building, poked into a few of the entryways to provide our recommendation that the building was not safe, not safe to enter, certainly to occupy, so we posted "Do Not Occupy" placards near all of the entry points for that building, and due to the significant damage to the entry points of the building immediately west, the Banana Antiques, we also posted a "Do Not Occupy" for that structure as well. I did go out to that site that Friday, December 29th, with the building owners and their insurance adjuster to enter the Banana Antique structure and do kind of a preliminary assessment of the damage in there. There was some water damage and appeared to be leaky roof, but there did not appear to be any structural issues, so as a result, we took the "Do Not Occupy" off of that structure to allow them the opportunity to get some of their belongings out and prepare the space for contractor to do some repair work and get that space dried out. On the 3rd, as I mentioned, we received a more comprehensive report from the insurance company's engineer, and that report indicated that there was some severe structural damage to some of the members supporting the second floor, and as a result, they recommended that some remedial shoring work be provided at the structure before any entry could be allowed inside. We received that shoring plan on January 11th last Thursday, so we got that, we reviewed it and approved it that same day, and the contractor came in the following morning, January 12th, to get that approved plan and get that permit issued, and then they started that work immediately last Friday morning. And that work continued through the weekend and up until this morning, they were continuing to take some of the awnings off both the front and back of the building because those posed potential hazards if something falls off the side of the building and kind of lands on one of those awnings. So, that work has now been complete, as of this afternoon, Building Services went out there, performed an inspection, and that is considered final. So, all the known work has been done, so we would expect there's still some more work to be done, there's still potential falling debris hazards, demolition work that needs to be completed at some point. As Karen mentioned, the investigation work is ongoing, a lot of different tenants on that first floor, a lot of different insurance companies and policies involved, so we would expect that to continue for several weeks potentially. There's some cleanup effort that needs to be done, especially on the second floor, it was recommended to get some of the masonry material off of that second floor, so that work will need to be done. At this time, it is only recommended that contractors doing cleanup work be accessed that second floor. We do know that there is now potentially some limited access to be granted to the first floor and the tenants of those businesses on the first floor, but that all needs to be coordinated directly through the owner or their representatives, the management company, and get verification from the insurance company that they can access, so that's what we know right now. Any questions regarding that?
Questions for Jason? Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Jason.
Sure.
When do you think it will be determined to tear the whole building down or rebuild?
I think that has to do with all that insurance investigation that's ongoing, I mean, we certainly have, you know, we could provide our opinion, but ultimately, it's a kind of a financial decision. I've heard that, you know, there's been some inquiries made to kind of see, you know, what could possibly be the next steps, do they rebuild? So, I know the owner is asking kind of that same question, but I would expect within the next few weeks, what we've requested of the owner and their insurance company is a plan going forward, what does the next 30 days look like with respect to work that needs to be done or decisions need to be made, so we should probably know in the next few weeks.
Councilmember Wales.
Is there one owner of that building?
Yes, an owner and a management company.
Okay. Yes.
Is it a local, or is it out of state?
The management company is local.
Yeah, but what about the owner? I'm just curious.
I don't know the owner that well, to be honest.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
I'll turn it over to Joyce.
Good evening, my name is Joyce Scott, I'm the Human Services Manager for the City of Auburn. Jerry Thorson, our emergency manager, is unfortunately ill this evening and unable to be with us. Those of you that know Jerry know that he is a wealth of knowledge, I unfortunately do not have a direct line to his brain for this process, but if there are questions for him, I'd be happy to follow up with him and get them back to you as soon as possible. So, we were asked to cover the immediate response of Emergency Management and Community Services with regards to the residents of the Heritage Apartments, and on the emergency management side of things, Jerry, our emergency manager, was in the Emergency Operations Center monitoring the fire to determine if the EOC should be activated for the event. He worked to help coordinate effort to open a temporary shelter for displaced residents on the night of the fire, and worked with city staff, the American Red Cross, and the Auburn Food Bank for donation management. The Food Bank collected clothing, food, and money for the fire victims, and emergency management personnel and CERT volunteers accepted furniture donations at a city building at Game Farm Park, and donations filled at least 1,500 square feet of the building. We were overwhelmed with donations at the time, the original plan had been to hold two separate weekends of accepting furniture, but it became clear after the first weekend that we were open that that was not going to be feasible given the limitations of the space and the number of residents that would be seeking this assistance. So, Emergency Management worked with city staff, King County, the Washington Emergency Management at the state level, FEMA, and the Small Business Association to facilitate low-interest loans for businesses and residents, you'll be hearing a little bit more about that shortly, and also coordinated efforts with the Red Cross to support Milton Fire residents with donations as well. Those of you may be aware, there was also a significant fire in Milton. On the Community Services side of things, we worked with Communications on a press release to provide residents with a phone number, both in the Auburn Reporter as well as on the city's main page, main website, a phone number to call for navigating assistance to try and centralize that as much as possible. We identified funds that were available through a motel voucher program that we operate, that we fund the Auburn Food Bank to offer in the community to be able to meet the immediate shelter needs for displaced residents beyond what the American Red Cross is able to provide. Some of you know that the shelter that was made available was at one of our school buildings, obviously that school needed to open up after the holiday break, it needed to be open on that following Monday. And we also coordinated assistance with the Auburn Food Bank and Emergency Management. And, you know, I just want to commend Auburn Food Bank and the American Red Cross for ensuring that our residents had, you know, safe and warm and dry place to go, both in the short term and in the longer term, while they were trying to find options for housing, find places to go with family or friends, and also to commend our community as a whole for responding so generously with the furniture and clothing and financial donations to help support those residents. The next steps for Emergency Management, this actually should have been edited- The next steps for emergency management, this actually should have been edited slightly, but this past weekend, there was some distribution of furniture to residents that were able to find places to live already and knew what those needs were on the 12th and 13th this past weekend. Emergency management will continue to assist in the efforts to support the folks coming out of this situation with the fire and continue to work with the Red Cross and service groups to provide the donations to local organizations that would be able to both support these residents in their ongoing needs and also meet their needs in the community. You know, we were overwhelmed with furniture donations, and not every single item will be able to be used by folks who were affected by this fire, but with these organizations' assistance, we can certainly make sure that these donations go to folks who are in need of them. We're also working to ensure that anybody who is not currently housed but may need furniture resources in the future will be able to access a voucher so that once they get settled, then they can go and, you know, through one of these locations, shop for what they need. And also, I know that emergency management has been working really hard to review their actions, you know, the night of and up through today, to figure out how they can improve on processes for the next major event. They've been coordinating with multiple internal departments at the city and with external providers as well to make sure that we can continue to use this as a learning opportunity for how to better serve the community. For community services, similarly, we're going to be ensuring that outreach is provided to residents regarding the possibility of accessing Small Business Association low-interest loans and continued engagement with the Food Bank to support residents as needed during this time. And I think Doug will be speaking a little bit more in detail to those loans, so he'll be able to answer questions a little bit better than I am for that particular piece.
Questions for Joy? Councilmember Wales.
Joy, you shared with Yolanda and I your successes of relocating some of these individuals. Why don't you share with this group your successes and how some have gained employment and other kinds of things because it adds a real positive face on this.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, the numbers are not as high as we'd like to see. When so many folks are displaced at once, it really, it's a challenge when we have a low vacancy rate of apartments already in our community. I know that there are at least three people who are currently in apartments locally. A few of the residents have left the area and relocated to be closer to family and friends and another support network or closer to other job opportunities. There were two that last I heard were very close to getting apartments and may have since been able to be placed, but that still leaves roughly 30 folks who are seeking a place. And, you know, certainly, one of the biggest things that we really needed was to hear from landlords in the community who might have vacancies. I know that we got a lot of phone calls about that, and we've been trying to coordinate that as best as possible. There's not a huge number of vacancies that we see locally, but we continue to encourage folks to reach out so that we can help connect them to the residents of this apartment.
Any other questions for Joy? Councilmember Wales.
Thank you, your mayor. As we look at the American Red Cross and what they did to house people, their vouchers, how many days were their vouchers worth? And what was the length of the vouchers that we were able to provide through the Food Bank? And as we look to the future, and we hopefully never have any kind of a disaster like this again, what is the kind of length of a voucher that we should be looking at for when we have to do some of these kind of major relocations?
Yeah, that's a good question. For the Red Cross as part of it, they were responsible for setting up the physical emergency shelter at the middle school. So they did not provide vouchers for shelter. They provided the physical setups that folks could shelter at that location. Once that ended, we had a range of days that were needed for folks to access those motel vouchers. For some residents, it was two to three nights. For others, it was, you know, around about two weeks in order for them to be able to find someplace to go next. One of the things that we found was that in the immediate aftermath of the fire, some folks were able to find short-term shelter with family members or friends, but we did see folks after about a week or so coming back and saying, you know, "I really need a few nights. I'm unable to continue staying in this particular location." So I think that what we took away from that is that ensuring that we have enough flexibility to meet those needs as they come up is really important because they look different for everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the area of what we did with economic development, obviously, the very next morning, I believe it was about, would have been about 7:00 a.m. East Coast time, the initial filing of request for disaster designation was filed with FEMA out of Washington, D.C. And when the offices in Sacramento opened at 8:00 a.m. West Coast time, within an hour after that, we already had an assignment from the federal government to the State Emergency Management Office out of Olympia, and it was assigned to their office. And in turn, by, I believe, about noon, 1:00 on the 27th, we had our first site visit by Emergency Management Office that was hosted and handled by Jerry out of Emergency Management in that pecking order here to view the site. And within, I think, three or four more days, we had a full team of folks from King County to state FEMA and local meeting for the beginning main look at disaster designation. The final application with FEMA was filed on the 2nd of January, and Governor Inslee signed the letter on the 10th of January, and it's sitting right now with the Regional Director of Region 10 for FEMA in Sacramento for their signature. Once that designation is signed and approved by the federal government, probably within two to three days, we're all set up for a team of specialists from the Small Business Administration to be here. They'll be setting up a permanent, or excuse me, a temporary full-time office for two to three weeks or whatever length of time it takes. They will be meeting with all of the businesses one-on-one. They'll be meeting with as many of the residential residents that they can meet with on one-on-one meetings and interview. The designation is quite interesting. The residents will have access up to, I believe it is, close to $40,000 that they could borrow under special terms from the federal government to help in relocation and setting your household back up. And the businesses can borrow up to $2 million for not to exceed 4% interest for up to a 30-year amortization with no call. So for a small business to be able to borrow funds under those terms makes it fairly easy to help them look at their plans for future relocation and rebuilding purposes. So once we get final authorization from FEMA that it's been signed, I would say probably within 24 to 48 hours after that, we'll have the SBA office functioning here. We've offered up the conference room and office space at our business incubator over in the train station. It was all set up, ready to go. It's easy access for the businesses to get to with parking, and FEMA felt that that was a very good location for a couple of weeks, so we're all set and ready for them to open whenever they tell us they'll be here. From an economic development perspective, there were 12 directly affected businesses, the nine that were in the building, the Banana Republic Building and then, or Antiques Building, and then also the building owners themselves, and then also MS Property Management was financially affected and lost a business as the property manager. So those were the businesses that we directly identified. We've also identified 48 indirect businesses that are around the perimeter, a perimeter, I'm sorry, around the building that have maybe possibly had some impact from water, smoke, whatever, and the SBA counselors will determine what their losses were and if they could be covered in any way. The immediate needs that we've started to do was developing a available list of current properties within the neighborhood that the businesses might look at wanting to relocate into, and we've already had a number of successes in that respect. I believe we have four, possibly five, we heard of another one today, that have already leased new locations within basically walking distance of where they were, excuse me. And so a number of the businesses are already starting to rebuild themselves. The daily assistance is a lot of handholding, a lot of conversation, information, pushing out information to the businesses, and more importantly, once we get the designation in place with the SBA and FEMA, then making sure these businesses get their face time with those counselors and see what options are available to them. Another area that we were very concerned in is you had a lot of businesses on that area, particularly on Main Street, that didn't have water, didn't have smoke damage, but they were being impacted because of the news stories that were put out. It was perceived that all of Main Street burnt down. So one of the things we wanted to try to do was quickly get a word out to the general public and regional market that downtown is open for business. And so we, about a week ago, we started running on a digital ad campaign.
Hey, Auburn, our businesses are open and they are ready to take care of you.
Thankful the roads open, hoping that everybody comes on down to Main Street and keeps shopping, and we appreciate your business and not abandoning us during this time of tragedy.
You know, don't be discouraged just because, you know, like sometimes the streets may be blocked off and so forth, but we're still here and we're still providing plenty of services to customers and clients.
We're still open after the fire over at the Heritage Building. Come and check out all of our deals. Thank you.
We made it through the fire and we're open Tuesday through Saturday, and we would love for you to come down and, you know, help us be here.
So this is Gosenco's Chocolate, and we sell delicious truffles and caramels. We do coffee and ice cream and fudge, so come down and get your sweet on.
Come on down, you heard her.
Well, we're a small boutique yarn shop here in downtown, and we offer not only boutique yarns and hand-painted and local yarns, but classes and events as well.
Turning Point Studio. We do one-on-one personal training, whatever it is the client needs to work on, whether rehab, anything like that. We're right across the street from where the Heritage Building had the fire, but we're definitely still open. We're always looking for new clients.
Cristalies has some great clothing. Come on down, get your bling on. They are on Main Street, and even with the Heritage Fire, they are open for business.
So come on down, everybody. Show Main Street exactly what we mean when we say buy local, shop local. Come on down, show them the love in Auburn.
So that ad has been running now for seven days, and through 12:00 today, it had had almost 90,000 views. People that had, the ad had been shown to, and they watched the entire 60-second ad. So it is, in a very simple, inexpensive way, we're pushing out the fact that Main Street is open for business, and we're as much concerned about the businesses that are still there as the ones that were destroyed. So we're trying our best to pay attention to them. Any questions?
Questions for Doug?
Thank you.
Okay, no, we've gone along here. Just wanted to note one quick thing. As Kevin mentioned, 1.6, approximately a million gallons of water, significant draw on our water resources, so we've never really been through an event like this, you know, weren't sure what the reaction was going to be in our system. Everyone was pleased to find out that there were no water quality or service issues noted, which I think is a testament to the work that Public Works does to maintain and clean our water infrastructure, so.
Councilmember Palloza?
Where did all the water go?
Hasn't gone far.
Good question. There's a lot of water still in that building. There's, I think we understand that there's a unfinished basement space that, yeah, that has a lot of water in it, so potentially that's going to have to be pumped out and put into our sewer system. But, yeah, a lot of it went into the ground, a lot of cracks probably in the foundation.
Councilmember Palloza?
What about this water, it will be contaminated?
So, yeah, certainly, yeah, potentially, yeah.
So what about stormwater outlet going out into, it's going to go somewhere like the Green River, so are we going to contain that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, I know, so immediately following the incident, stormwater inserts were placed on all of the catch basins around the perimeter of the building, so any of the runoff that was going in there was going through a filter. But yes, we'll be working with the property owner on any remediation efforts that are required as part of the cleanup of that building.
Councilmember Brown? Oh, go ahead.
I want to say too, the fire department focuses on the runoff issue all the time, so we actually shut down some of the master streams when we had the fire under control just because we understand that runoff's a big concern, so we probably could have pumped 2 million gallons.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I just wanted to address this to Chief Olson. I live at Second Street Northeast in D., and I got tired of standing there watching your folks work, our folks work, and I just have to just compliment what a professional group of people, and I know they were working awfully hard in very dangerous conditions and made me proud to be a resident here in Auburn and being on this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the groups that isn't present tonight is ValleyCom, right? So the call receivers and the call dispatchers. Imagine trying to coordinate all of those pieces of apparatus from all of those different agencies, and then shortly after that, the fire that occurred up in Federal Way, and so then repositioning some of those assets to ensure the safety of the people that are impacted by that fire. And sadly, the outcome at the fire in Federal Way was not as good as the outcome here in Auburn. So our hearts go out to those in Federal Way. But just, it's a coordinated effort by so many people. I mean, the people that are here tonight presenting are a small number of those that are required to ensure the safety of the residents and the professional response, and I am very thankful of the job that you have all been doing and that you continue to do to ensure the best possible outcome. As we say, out of the ashes will come something positive, and the response from everyone involved has certainly been one of those positives.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wales?
I want to thank you too for the 45 minutes. This is, no, it's been very, very informative because you don't think of dealing with surface water management issues and fire alarms and relocation, and then in some situations, relocation to get individuals. Joy, I would appreciate it if you could track down for me the monetary contributions that were collected in relationship to this incident and accounting for how the money was spent. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to appointments. These are board and commission appointments. City Council to confirm the reappointments for the following board and commission members for a new three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020. For the Auburn Tourism Board, Tanya Jones. For the Cemetery Board, Jean Hicks. And for the Salary Commission, Nancy Colson. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman?
Move to approve.
Move to approve appointments as listed?
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggot?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
I personally know all three of these individuals, good upstanding citizens of Auburn, and say nothing bad about any of them.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the board and commission appointments for the Auburn Tourism Board, Cemetery Board, and Salary Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right. We do have an agenda modification this evening. It's Resolution Number 5344, and we will address that resolution in the appropriate place after Resolution Number 5342 on tonight's agenda. Is there anything else, Danny, that needs to be said about that?
No, Your Honor, that is it. It was distributed Friday, and appears, the title of it appears on the agenda as an agenda modification.
Great, thank you. And just for further reference on this, there will be an opportunity, since this is for City Council, to express support for voter approval for the Valley Regional Fire Authority Prop Number One, there will be an opportunity for opposition opinions to be stated prior to council voting on that resolution. Correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, citizen input. We have no public hearings this evening, but we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please maintain comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Zimmerman. I live at 33029, 46th Place South. Last time I was telling you about Jason Crum and Fernando, I think Fernandez, the inspector, was up looking at this concrete wall that was built on top of the ground without any kind of embedded footing or foundation, and there was a subsequent project to make corrections. Now, I told you about part of that last time, and now we are out by the street where this, a portion of this is being used as retaining wall. And it's the only part of the project that's really visible from the street because of the landscaping and the wall and the trees that hide everything. But anyway, I pointed out to them that right there is where the city vehicle was setting, and the undisturbed landscaping there was up to four foot of fill. On the 27th day of May 2016, the inspector approved that area for concrete pour. There was no disturbance of that landscaping. There was no hole dug there. There was nothing done there. Now, when I reported that to the city, no one seemed to have any interest in that fact. I told them I had four witnesses that were willing to tell you that, but nobody had any interest in it. Now, this is a seismic improvement. It's supposed to, the purpose of the code is to protect people's property, their health, and their lives, and now nobody has any interest in even approving what the city allowed to be done that was totally illegal because they did not know what the code was. Apparently, they've been denying it for seven years. And the most outrageous part about this is not the risk that it has put to us. I mean, we're only two people. The biggest concern should be, everybody in this city should be the fact that nobody cared enough to even question or investigate or do anything about the fact they're approving things that weren't even done on seismic improvements. This is just absolutely outrageous. I, you know, it's just beyond my comprehension. Anyway, it looks like I'm about out of time again. I don't know what I'll talk about in the next episode, but this is so outrageous, it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Baccus, councilmembers. My name is Danielle Butzick. I live at 1424 M Street Northeast. I'm here to just speak my support for the Resolution Number 6663, amending the section of the Auburn City Code about the number of members of the Auburn Airport Advisory Board. I've been to the last eight or so meetings of the board, and quite a few of those meetings that I've been to, there've only been three of the same members there, and, you know, that's totally fine. Things happen, people have things come up in their lives, but I think it'd be really great to expand the membership of the board, just to give people the flexibility to live their lives and have things come up and not get in the way of the board's business getting done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on. Let's see, correspondence. So there was correspondence, and this is my fault, I did not get copies made for council. There was a gentleman who was at the Senior Center last Thursday, when Councilmember De Corsi was there, who wanted to come and speak to council, but his wife recently fell and broke her hip, and so he's providing care to his wife. We will make copies of that email that he sent to me and ensure that it is distributed to each of you as a council member. And we will also, if necessary, because he asked for it to be public correspondence, if we need to somehow admit it at our next council meeting, would that be an appropriate way to do that, or, okay, we'll just use it as correspondence in the next council meeting. All right, thank you. So my apologies for not getting that. I received it this morning and did not make the copies that I had intended to make. All right, we will move on to Council Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendations to the City Council if any. And for finance, we have Councilmember Brown.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I would report that last Friday, Councilmember Holman and I reviewed the latest voucher, vouchers in the amount of approximately $7.4 million. We also reviewed payroll checks, direct deposits, benefits, tax deposits, for a total of $2.1 million. Special thank you to Finance Director Coleman, who sat with us and went through a very laborious period of me trying to figure out those reports, and I wanted to thank her for that. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. And our second ad hoc committee is the 2018 Street Maintenance Priority. Is that the right name for that? Some form of that, and that's Councilmember De Corsi.
Thank you, Mayor. We're just calling it Road Projects for now.
Road Projects, all right, that's easier.
We had to postpone our last meeting. We had invited Assistant Director Galb to join us, and she was not able to join us. So we've rescheduled our meeting to January 29.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one notion in the form listed. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember De Corsi.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have about four items here on the Consent Agenda. First item is the minutes for the January 2 City Council Meeting, the claims vouchers, and the payroll vouchers, as explained by Councilmember Brown, and the Public Works Project CP 1523, which is a final pay estimate at basically $0. So it's just the final paperwork to complete the project. The work has already been done on the Lake Taps Parkway Preservation Project.
Final pay estimates of $0 are always a good thing.
Absolutely.
Yes. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, but under new business, I am going to bring up, thank you to Deputy Mayor Baggett for bringing this forward. Last week, Deputy Mayor Baggett and I sent out an email to the councilmembers on the newest seating arrangement, which we are in this evening. And Councilmember Baggett found in the Council Rules of Procedures where it says that "The seating arrangement for other members of the council other than the mayor and the deputy mayor shall be as directed by the City Council pursuant to a motion duly made and seconded and approved by a majority of the City Council, following the recommendation of an ad hoc committee of three councilmembers called for that purpose." Now, our city attorney did say that because past practice has been that the mayor and deputy mayor work on that and make the seating arrangements, that we could in fact do that. However, I guess we'll leave it open, but I do have an ad hoc committee that I would like to form, if you would prefer to do it that way, other than leaving the seating as it currently is. So, Mr. City Attorney, how do we do that?
We could either have volunteers, or you could call upon, or people could...
So I have spoken with three councilmembers who would be willing to serve on the ad hoc committee.
And that would be a sufficient way for the ad hoc committee to be developed?
All right. If there is, is there a desire for the ad hoc committee, or would you prefer to leave seating as it currently is? Councilmember Brown.
Mayor, thank you very much. I'd just say that I'm enjoying this view from here, so, but I would be amenable to moving if someone else had that great desire, but I'm fine right where I'm sitting.
Councilmember Wales.
Well, I'm fine too, and as long as you keep helping me turn on my microphone from that far away, I'm perfectly happy here.
Okay, any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see a reorientation. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'd volunteer to be on the ad hoc.
That's good, because I asked you if you'd be on the ad hoc. All right, so in that case, just to make sure that we are following the rules and procedures of council, I would like to appoint an ad hoc committee of Deputy Mayor Baggett, Councilmember Pelosi, and Councilmember Holman to discuss the seating arrangement, bring it back to a steady session, and then it will come back to a vote of the council. It's interesting that it's that formal, but that's what it states in your rules and procedures, and again, even though our city attorney said we could continue on in the fashion that we have been doing, we will move forward with the ad hoc committee in a formal vote. Okay? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Ordinance Number 6663, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending Section 2.33.010 of the Auburn City Code relating to the number of members of the Auburn Airport Advisory, excuse me, the Municipal Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Ordinance 6663.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, it was said earlier that moving from a five-member board to a seven-member board does have its advantages for absences, quorum, and it also provides additional volunteer service opportunities for individuals interested in the community of Auburn.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 6663, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5339, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, setting a public hearing to consider the renewal of franchise agreement number 12-41, an amendment to the Ordinance 6452 with Zayo Group LLC.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I move for the acceptance of Resolution Number 5339.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, this is merely a resolution to set a date for a public hearing to consider the renewal of the Zayo Group, which is a telecom company.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any city compensation for using our rideaway?
The state law controls what we can do in terms of franchising, franchise fees. Typically, we do negotiate as a part of the franchise, some type of fee structure, but it's controlled to a significant degree by the state law.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5339, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5342, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal, interagency agreement between the City of Auburn and the Washington State Department of Transportation relating to a project on West Valley Highway from Peaslee Canyon Road to SR 18.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 5342.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Resolution Number 5342 will accomplish important road improvements as specified in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5342, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5344, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, expressing support for the voter approval of the Valley Regional Fire Authority Proposition One to continue a voter authorized benefit charge for each year for an additional six years.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, okay, so we'll do a motion and a second, and then open it up for public comment?
That would be a way to put it on the table.
All right. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 5344.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember De Corsi.
I'll second a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This sets forth for the next six years, the Valley Regional Fire Authority benefit charge covering properties within the, taxing properties within the City of Auburn and Algonah and Pacific, City of Pacific.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I will open it up to public comment, opposition to Proposition Number One. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone like to speak on Proposition Number One? Hearing none, we will close the comment period. Is there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5344, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have come to mayor and council reports. At this time, mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Wednesday, January 10, I attended our first Emergency Management Advisory Committee for the year, better known as EMAC. This was held in Renton, and basically, we have a new chair of this advisory committee. Her name is Mary Hobday, and she is the Emergency Management Manager, Emergency Planning Manager for Puget Sound Energy. She takes over for a, the chair we had for 2017, who was Eric Walgren of the King County Fire Chiefs Association, for his service, and a commemorative coin was presented to Chief Walgren by Walt Hubbard from the King County Executive's Office. The big topic of discussion for the meeting was the six, the upcoming six-hour EMAC retreat to be held on Tuesday, February 14, Valentine's Day, which my wife will just love. The retreat will predominantly review the Cascadia Rising event and what we learned, and hopefully, how we can overcome some of the findings, which were not all positive. Some may recall my report earlier concerning the results demonstrated from this full-scale drill that involved many cities, fire and law enforcement, military, and emergency management personnel across the state. Primary importance here is awareness by the individual residents of the various cities, and it's very important to get this message out. This retreat will encompass, like I said, six hours of review of all of the findings, and not just reviews, but also trying to come up with solutions to some of the problems that were encountered. As I mentioned, there, the possibility of a major earthquake and subsequent actions would result in considerable personal injury and death, as well as several areas of reconstruction after this event that would be required. Also, on Monday, the January 15, I attended the grand opening. I'm probably going to steal a bunch... I'm probably going to steal a bunch of people's thunder on this one. I attended the grand opening of the Auburn Boeing Workforce Readiness Center facility, along with many of my fellow council members, Mayor Backus, Economic Development Manager Doug Lean, Chamber CEO Julia Jordan, Chamber Board Member Brian Barron, and a host of Boeing employees and contractor personnel. Tour of the new hands-on assembly training facility and classrooms was conducted that was both enlightening and educational, especially the robotics demonstrations, which were remarkable. This is the first new building at the Boeing site to open in 25 years, and demonstrates Boeing's commitment to its employees and the City of Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you try the virtual reality glasses?
No, I, last time I put those things on, I went crazy. I was.
They are amazing. They were.
I suffered from motion sickness for about two minutes.
I can understand why, but they showed the interiors of several of their, Boeing's newest airplanes, and it was quite amazing, you have those glasses on. But when you turn, it was like you really were inside that airplane. It would turn with you, so amazing stuff going on at the Boeing Company. Next, Councilmember Wales.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to first note that I'm going to be taking a vacation, working vacation, January 25th, 29th, so if we have a study session or a council session, I won't be able to be there, and I want to make sure everyone knew what I was doing. Our council members, you know, work for our citizens, and on January 9th, I had an opportunity to work with some residents up at Lakeland Hills with our engineering department over some landscaping issues in a median, and we all learned a lot, and it was fun to sit down with the quality engineers that we have and try to come up with some solutions. So if you're out there in the community and you have issues, you know, feel free to reach out to our staff and to your council members. On Thursday, January 14th, I met with some citizens regarding a recent remodel that required an elevator to be installed in a two-story building, commercial building, and I'm looking forward to the time when we can look at the codes as it relates to, how many square feet do we remodel when we have to install an elevator? Because this was quite an expense to this particular business. A Martin Luther King Day, a day of service, which was yesterday, I had an opportunity to work with some people, again, up at Lakeland Hills regarding some garbage issues, and we hope to get those taken care of. And finally, in working with our Auburn Valley Creative Group, found that they were robbed a couple of days ago, and hope that, working with the Auburn PD, we can come up with some ways to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 11th, I did attend the coffee hour at the Senior Center. We had a small, but very enthusiastic and vocal group. Actually, it was a very good meeting. We took the full hour to discuss things, and the first thing on the topic was the Heritage Building Fire. And there was questions related to homelessness and safety in the city. So we were, was able to kind of give them some detailed information and ask them to send letters or to come to public comment period if they wanted to go any further with that, and we will give them an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the South County Transportation Board Meeting, and we had three public testimonies, and this is kind of interesting. The third runway, they had third runway concerns. The flight activity out at Sea-Tac Airport, they say, has increased 30% over the years, and they have requested an update of the 1997 impact statement study. Also, we had a briefing on the SR 167 tolling update, the hot lanes, and the rates will be anywhere from 75 cents to $9. The annual revenue will bring in about $2.8 million, and we got also a briefing on the performance, as in time and speed improvements. Also, I had an opportunity, the 167 and 405 interchange there in Renton, the flyover project that's supposed to really reduce a lot of the interchange connection. Congestion, thank you. The bill on that is going to be $210 million, and it's planning to open in 2019. Also, the interlocal agreement that we have with King County was signed by the King County Council on January the 8th, and it had our revisions that we wanted in it, so that's a done deal. Also, I attended the Regional Policy Committee in Seattle, and the City of Seattle residents approved an income tax in July of 2017. The income tax would be anything earned over $250,000 and $500,000. It would be a 2.25% increase, and it would bring in $140 million annually to the City of Seattle. In November of last year, the King County Superior, Supreme Court ruled the city tax approval was invalid. Now, take, if, if, if it, if it, it's going, it's going to the Supreme Court, the Washington State Supreme Court, to make a further decision, but say that it was approved by the Supreme Court. And any city then could do a city tax or... And if we have 170 residents in the City of Auburn, that makes anywhere from $250,000 over $500,000. And it would bring in about $1.9 million annually to the City of Auburn. But since 1933, the Washington State Supreme Court has made all tries for income tax, state or city, invalid. So it doesn't look very promising that we would be able to get another $1.9 million in taxes. Isn't that interesting? Then, I was at the King County Solid Waste Meeting, and paint recycling came up again. For the last five years, advocates for paint recycling, in other words, the latex paint we have in our garage and those gallons and half gallons of paint, the only way that we can recycle now is to get some kitty litter, dump it in there and let it solidify, and then we can throw it in the, in the garbage. Well, I'm an advocate of recycling, so I contacted 30th District Rep. Mike Pellicetti.
Pellicotti.
And he jumped on it right away, checked it out, and so he's going to follow it for us through the legislative cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. Perhaps you've noticed that police officers are once again wearing black bands over their badges. On Sunday, January 7th, Pierce County Deputy Sheriff Daniel A. McCartney was fatally shot while responding to a drug-related armed robbery near Fredericksson. We drape our badges in honor of our brother, in his memory, and of his life. His memorial service will be tomorrow. Brother and sister officers from all over Washington, Idaho, Oregon, British Columbia, and even further, will attend to pay their respect. Deputy McCartney lived in Yelm, was married, the father of three boys, ages four, six, and nine. Like you, Bill, he was a Navy veteran. He earned the Afghan, Afghanistan Campaign Medal among, medal among many other honors. After leaving the Navy in 2008, he started his law enforcement career at Hoquiem, Washington, and then he joined the Pierce County Sheriff's Office in 2014. Tonight, I'm going to read a piece of prose written by a colleague of Daniel's. It's better than anything I could ever say or write. "Last night, I lost a brother, a friend. It started with a call around midnight. I was cleaning up my kid's art mess from the day. 'Dan's been shot, and it's not looking good,' the voice said. Minutes later, I was in uniform and in my patrol car headed to the scene. I kissed my wife goodbye and left quickly. I knew she'd had questions, but I didn't have time. The rain was pelting down, the wipers were on full speed, the darkness pressed in from the outside and from the inside. As I hit the freeway, the all-call message went out, and I realized what I already knew. I wasn't alone. As I came into the area, there was red and blue at every corner. I added my lights to the darkness of the night, and the darkness knew we had arrived. The call came over the radio, Dan was dead. The voice dropped off the radio. As I sat there on that dark night, I was alone to my thoughts. I thought about his wife. She had probably been sleeping when she was awakened to the news. I thought about his sons. They're about the same age as mine. How do you tell a kid that? How would my wife tell my kids? I don't cry, it's just not something I do. But I sat there on that cold, dark night, and I began to cry. I thought about the years stolen from Dan's sons, he and his wife's dreams taken from them. My thoughts turned to my family. My wife hates my job, she always has, she worries. I thought about my kids. I thought about them growing up. I want to be there. I should quit, I told myself. The darkness smiled. My wife had asked me to quit several times. I always tell her the same thing, evil prevails when good men do nothing. I work with a man that has that tattooed on his arm. I'm not a tattoo guy, but I've always admired that tattoo. I got home around 9:00 in the morning. I went to bed, but I didn't sleep. Dan died because evil men were doing evil things. While everyone else was screaming and running and yelling for help, Dan came to help. He just didn't run towards the darkness, he stood there in defiance of it. He knew the danger, we all do. I know he wasn't afraid, because I know what he was like. He was doing what he loved. He was fighting evil, he was helping the helpless. I know about how much poorer the world was without Dan, and I thought about how much richer the world was because of the lives Dan had saved, the evil men he had stopped, and the light he had brought into the darkness. The world is a better place because Dan had lived in it, and he had done something to better it. Men aren't born heroes, some die heroes, but Dan lived as a hero. I don't know the words to console those close to Dan. I know that I'll always remember him. To most of the world, he may be a news story, he may be a thought for a while, but I will always remember him for the hero he was, for the man that loved his family. We wore blue together as brothers, we stood against the darkness of evil in this world. I know he still defies that darkness, and I know that when the darkness raises its head again to bring sorrow and destruction into this world, and I know Dan's other brothers and sisters in blue won't hesitate to meet it head-on, if for nothing more than to be counted worthy, as Dan showed he was. And he's still with us. My hope is, when people hear about Dan and about this night, that good men and women will step up, they will do their part, they'll protect their community. Evil prevails when good men do nothing. My deepest sorrow to your family, Dan, may you rest in peace, my brother. Keep holding the light." Pierce County Deputy Sheriff Daniel A. McCartney, end of watch, January 7th, 2018. Thirty-four years of age.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's hard to follow that. Thank you, Councilman Holman. I want to report that for the last couple of weeks, I've been spending a little extra time here at City Hall, and I want to thank some people that have been helping me out. Assistant Director of Engineering, Ingrid Gaub, Assistant City Engineer, Jeff Sweeting, Assistant Director, Community Development Services, Jeff Tate, Director of HR and Risk Management, Rob Roscoe, City Attorney, Dan Hyde, and Innovation and Technology Director and Assistant Director, Paul Haugen, and Ashley Riggs have all spent a great deal of time with me, helping me to understand all the great work that is done by this city in service to our citizens, and I have a lot more to learn, but I want to thank you very much for helping out. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, and I concur. There is a lot of great work being done on behalf of the citizens, and we have an amazing team doing that, and that includes the City Council, who you all do great things out in our community, and I appreciate it very much. Clearly, there has been a lot of reason for sorrow in the last couple of weeks, and I will share a little bit more of that sorrow, but also add some positives in what's been occurring as well. On Thursday, the 4th of January, as many of you know, and some of you were there, Go Brewing held a fundraiser to support the businesses that were displaced by the Heritage Fire. It was an extremely well-attended event, a lot of different types of people coming together in support of not only a local business, but the local businesses that were displaced by the fire. Always makes me proud to see what comes of the City of Auburn and the people who live here, who support one another so well. On Saturday, the 6th of January, I attended the memorial service for Sumner Mayor Dave Enslow. The church, the Calvary Community Church in Sumner, was to standing-room-only capacity as he had a significant impact to not just the City of Sumner, but to the entire region. He was a great believer in transit and started on the board at Sound Transit in 1999. So he has seen a great deal over the course of his experience on the Sound Transit Board. He was touted by some as being a little bit curmudgeonly at times, enjoyed challenging some to their thoughts that they would share with him, some of them being city employees. He would challenge them, whether he believed in what they were saying or didn't say. He just wanted to make sure that they could support their opinions. He loved antique cars, had several. He had a cement boat. Now, I don't know who sold him a cement boat, but he floated that boat. And so I don't think there are many of those boats available. I can't imagine that it's a great sailing, selling point, but Mayor Enslow enjoyed the one that he had. He had a very, very kind heart, and one of the things that was said about him is he, he wanted everyone to be happy. He didn't even like watching scary movies or violent movies. That was the type of person that he was. He just, he didn't want to see that, even if it was on screen. He wanted to believe in the best of people, and I... if it was on screen. He wanted to believe in the best of people, and I so admire him for that. And he is going to be missed for numerous reasons, but for one, many people commented on the fact that he would walk around the City of Sumner almost every day, and people looked forward to seeing where he would be with a smile on his face at every opportunity. And rather ironically, prior to his death, now remember, most of us are sworn in to our elected or re-elected positions shortly before the end of the year for official purposes and ceremonially on the first council meeting of the year. Mayor Enslo wanted Mayor Pugh, the new mayor, to be sworn in on December 14th. Mayor Enslo died shortly after that, just a few days later, but he wanted to be able to swear in the new mayor, and so I know that that is very significant and meaningful for new Mayor Pugh as he moves forward in the City of Sumner, and we wish them the greatest of success. On Tuesday, the 9th, I had the opportunity to meet with two new executive directors. One was with Maia Mua, who is the new Regional Director or South King County Director for King County Public Health, and she is replacing Karen Russell, who retired just a few months ago. And then also met with Shelley Preco, who is the new Executive Director for Nexus Youth and Family. In both cases, we talked about opportunities for the City of Auburn and those organizations to partner, and how do we better serve those in need in our communities. So I look forward to work with them in the future, and councilmembers, if you have not had the chance to meet either or both of those women, we'll make sure that we find a way for you to meet them and find out the great work that they're doing as well. And then that night, at around 8:00, was down at Auburn Riverside High School to meet with 42 Australian students and their Auburn Riverside High School counterparts who were hosting them. It was quite a lively group. Imagine, I was thinking there were going to be just a few students, and imagine going into a library and seeing about 85 students piling in, because there were all kinds of suites there for them to partake in, as we were chatting with them about how City of Auburn government works and answering their questions. Fun group, it always is. It was just a larger group than we usually see. Also, attended the ribbon cutting yesterday at Boeing for operations readiness, and that was a great event. Very proud of that building, and as Deputy Mayor Baggett said, it is the first building new at the Boeing Company in Auburn in 25 years, and in the very near future, will be breaking ground for the second building on their site. And on another sad note, hate to leave it on a sad note, but just wanted to give our thoughts and prayers for the family of former Washington Governor and King County Executive, John Spellman, who passed away today at the age of 91. He was the first King County Executive, and I believe the last Republican governor in the state of Washington. So our condolences, our thoughts, and our prayers do go out to John Spellman's family as they mourn his loss, but also celebrate all of the accomplishments that he has in the state of Washington and specifically in King County. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive or closed session this evening?
We do not, Your Honor.
All right. In that case, we are adjourned. Thank you. Yeah, tell her I hope she's feeling better. Oh, no.